Yes.
Good to hear.
Um, did you call this meeting to order?
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
I mean, did you have that summary you did on the payroll thing that we talked about today? Do you have a copy of that?
The summary of the paper.
Well, um, comp time?
Yeah, I didn't give you a copy. I do have a.
Yeah, I gave it back.
I get copies.
Well, I just need one.
Do you have a copy or not? Do you want one? I made a copy. That's the only copy I got. You will look at that.
No, no, I got it.
Was that what you gave me?
Yes. Okay, uh, payroll and vendor checks are done. Make the motion of acceptance minutes from December twenty ninth.
Second.
I vote yes.
I vote yes. One more vote since I need Jordan.
Uh, I guess I'd go yes, even though I wasn't there, so I would go with the right.
Okay.
He's got the emails.
You got the, you got the minutes on your emails. Jordan?
Yep.
Okay. Uh, signing accepted meetings from January twelve, twenty twenty one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Abatements for Holden, Richos and voucher.
I signed a couple of them. I'm not sure I finished all of them.
Those are all signed off on.
Can we pop your paper?
Bam. Intent to cut for Bateese and a timber tax for Bateese. That's all been signed off on.
I think so.
Okay. Veterans tax credit has been signed off on.
I'm not sure. Too many.
Payment request for HEB engineers from the bridges, the capital reserve. It's all signed off on.
You signed them, I don't know.
Uh, that's this one right here. Yeah, she sent us that ahead of time, so we need that. So that is signed, yeah.
Okay, um, next, the report to town officials. I just want to do a reminder to the town about the meeting procedures. If you have something to discuss with the select board, if you could, to get it on the agenda for Tuesday meeting, you have to get it in Thursday before. And you have to write down what your issues are that you'd like to discuss in front of the select board. And also potential solution, uh, so that the select board has got a smooth way of addressing the issue and voting on it. Let's see. Rolla, you want to give the, go ahead, Senator.
Does that, uh, getting your stuff in Thursday before include all department heads and everybody for any agenda item? I'm just curious because sometimes I'll get pricing.
That comes in late?
It, it won't come in, like, I'll ask for it and I won't get it till Friday and sometimes I won't get it till Monday. And if, I, sometimes I'm just saying, if I wait that extra two weeks.
Sure.
You know, I'm, I'm just curious.
I understand that.
Yep.
And the majority of the time, I'd like to give the selectmen, uh, time to think about things before coming into the meeting and voting on it. That's, that's the only purpose to this, is not to make life harder. But I fully understand there's going to be exceptions to the rule, but I'd rather have less exceptions than, uh.
It doesn't happen often, it just does happen, that's why I'm asking.
And I think we're all realistic on that. Um, do you have any thoughts on that?
All I know is, Mr. Chairman, you worked hard and put together that memo to everybody when you became chairman. And, and I think it's very important, I mean, so, I mean, right now Tuesdays are my days up in North Havel, the county commission stuff, and I appreciate, Linda, thank you so much for, you know, sending all that stuff to me. And I did have time to look at it and I looked at just about everything, but there's a couple of things that I just, there's no way I had time to digest it. So if we can follow the chairman's, uh, procedure that he set out, and I, I'm not sure whether we all voted for it, but I certainly was.
Yeah, we did.
A hundred percent in agreement. And, and it's designed so that we can run things smoothly and the meetings don't go over a long time, and they haven't. And, uh, it, it's just designed so that we can be ready, so that we can speak knowingly and, and, you know, intelligently about what's going on and what's being requested.
The purpose of the procedure is so you make thoughtful decisions in town and well thought out. Jordan, your thoughts on this?
I agree completely. I think it's a great policy, uh, except for department heads and things that come up. Those are important, so, you know, the policies that come to a short notice, that's different, but whenever we have time, um, that's a good policy.
Okay. Okay, um, Chief Trot, your police report?
Yes. So, uh, since my last presentation to the board, while on patrol, I assisted a Warren Wentworth ambulance with a call, a service call in town here. Uh, also while on patrol, I notified Drapton County when I was on a school patrol of a large amount of smoke that I saw coming from a, the back of a residence on Beach Hill Road. And we weren't able to determine at the time whether it was in Warren or Wentworth. It was determined to be in Wentworth, but it was a brush fire behind a residence. And we were able to get that figured out and that information was conveyed to Chief Ames later. While on patrol, I as well found a door to a residence open on a weekend that had got blown open during one of our windstorms and the owners were not there. So I wanted to make sure that nobody was in the residence that was not supposed to be there. I left a note for the property owners and secured the door for them. Also, while on patrol the same day, I came across a vehicle that was parked on Buffalo Road. It was parked in the middle of the travel portion of the roadway. It was unintended. A road agent came by at the same time. We were both out checking roads and moving trees and the trees and branches that had come down. Anyways, to make a long story short, the vehicle had no license plates on it, front or back. And while I was checking the vehicle, a female had come out of the woods and made contact with her. She said that she was the new owner of the vehicle. She had just purchased it from a friend. Was driving it home, was having mechanical problems. The vehicle overheated, so she stopped to try to get some help from a resident. I issued her a citation for, uh, unregistered and then sent her on away. And I subsequently did a follow-up investigation and following her footprints back to a residence on Buffalo Road, I found where she removed two sets of license plates from a parked vehicle. So I am subsequently in the process of doing an arrest warrant for an attempted theft. So these impromptu patrols sometimes.
Yeah.
Turn out to be, uh, turn out to be very worthwhile.
Chief, was it, I, I don't know if you can say, is that person a resident of the town?
No. So you're not? Nope, not at all. On the administrative end of things, we've had quite an influx in requests for resident pistol permits. I think that we've probably tripled the number that we're doing right now. And our administrative assistant, Mrs. Trotts, doing her best to stay on top of those as well as the administrative duties that we have for year-end paperwork to include our year-end compliance reports. I'm sure Chief Ames can attest to what those are like, that sometimes at the end of the year. But, uh, as a result of that, she's been coming in on other days other than Tuesdays and getting some work done so she's able to get things caught up. She's a salaried employee, so even though you see her like you did today, it doesn't cost the town any more money. She just didn't work on the needs to be done and we're staying on top of it, so. Last week, uh, she also assisted me. We did a impromptu traffic study in front of the Wentworth Elementary School. We'd received a number of complaints regarding speeding vehicles. So we did an impromptu study there, the number of vehicles that came through, the majority of them. And when I say the majority, it was like ninety-six point two percent were all obeying the speed limit. Those that weren't just needed a little flash of some blue lights for a gentle reminder. One did receive a citation, not for speed, but for something else. So those complaints aren't going unheard or unaddressed. They are being addressed. And since then, I've conducted several school patrols, both in the morning and the afternoon. That makes it a little harder for me sometimes because I break my day up. I come down, work for a few hours, leave and then come back and still wind up doing some more patrol, but it, it blows a hole in a whole day for you. The other thing I want to end with is, uh, I was asked last week by a Wentworth resident, why the Wentworth Police Cruiser was seen in the Woodsville-Havel area a week ago along with several other police cruisers. And for the purpose of transparency, I'll tell the board why and the town why. We have a mutual aid agreement with our sister communities and some of our extended sister communities like Havel, for example. I was there along with New Hampshire State Police, New Hampshire Fishing Game, the Bath Police Department and Wentworth. And we backed up the Havel Police Department on a call with a barricaded subject that was having some mental health issues. And he was barricaded in a residence with several machetes and knives. And there was some general concern, obviously, for everyone's safety. So we do what we did. We did what we do. We trained for it. We went there together, several units. We made contact with him. We were able to talk him out of the residence. Nobody was harmed and he was transported to the hospital voluntarily to get the help that he needed. So that's the reason why the cruiser was up there and when we were done, everybody went home safely.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any questions? I don't have any questions, but these, um, these department reports will be in a minute. Chief Ames, fire report?
Sure. Uh, calls for service, we've only had one since the last meeting, Lock My Wood. That's great. Uh, that was a animal rescue for the horse that had gone down. And we've gotten those types of calls before.
Okay. What happened to the horse?
It was an older horse, uh, I believe slipped on some ice, had gone down sometime during the night. What's that?
Did it splay its pelvis?
Um, that I'm not sure. They did have a vet come in and.
Yeah.
Cause we couldn't get the horse back up, so.
Oh, geez.
So the vet had to come and take care of it from there.
Yeah. Okay.
So training, we have added an extra training per month for the newer members. Uh, good response out of the members for that. We had seven come to that, which is what I was expecting and hoping for. Uh, continuing with our normal training programs. Recently, we were gifted from La Conia Fire Department, twelve hundred feet of forged supply hose. They are upgrading their hose. They look at other towns that, you know, might be able to use this stuff. Uh, so they, they had sent us an email. I responded quickly and said, yeah, we'll, we would take it, so. So we get that. That's a, uh, if you were to buy that hose new, it'd be around sixty-seven hundred dollars.
So this hose, does it come with attachments on the end?
It is. It's all pre-coupled.
Yep.
Um, and it matches the supply line that we use now.
Okay. So we don't need to get the couplings?
Yeah, there's no, no need for any other items. It's a direct fit.
Wow, that's a good deal.
Yep. Then we also were gifted a computer system for the station. Uh, we've been having some issues with the one we had there. Uh, and we use it mostly for the national incident reporting system. Public State University has a program for nonprofit organizations. And you can apply for that. And I found this out through one of our members. So we did the application and, you know, we were lucky enough to get a computer system that was upgraded, updated and, uh, a reefer. And that was at no cost to the department as well.
Okay. Appreciate your initiative.
That's all I have. Oh, one more thing. The bulk of the firefighters have received round one on their COVID vaccination.
Oh, that's good.
So all the first responders didn't want it. We weren't forcing them.
Yeah. How many didn't want it? Cause it makes a lot of sense if.
It was three out of twenty that did not.
What's it cost?
It was no cost.
It's no cost.
Yeah, the, uh, the local one toward the National Guard Armory in Pluma, the closest one.
Yeah.
They get it down there.
Yeah. Yeah, it, everybody's trying to facilitate it. And actually, this state is doing an awesome job compared to other states on, on getting it done.
Um, I, I gotta tell you, uh, at the beginning, I, I told the chief that I was really not sure about it cause I, you know, there's plenty of rumors about all kinds of things and I think a lot of it's political. I don't, I don't know, uh, you know, ultimately, I don't think anyone knows like long-term effects and whatnot, but, um, I, I think looking at different medical documentation and talking to nurses and doctors and that sort of thing was the best advice that I think I could, could have got. I don't, I don't know if you would say anything to the town folk on your, on, in your opinion, since, you know, your experience, but.
Yeah, I think that, um, and I'm speaking with, from a medical point of view as a physician, it makes sense in this pandemic for, uh, as many people to get vaccinated as possible so you develop a herd of community. So this, this, uh, you know, basically plague is not going to be, not going to perpetuate itself over the years. Um, and right now, let, if people, and what I'm puzzled by a little bit and troubled is that first responders are people that are going to engage unknown individuals right away. And for them to not be immunized is a real problem. And, you know, I know it's, uh, the state will live free or die, but you got to understand what your mission is as, as, as a firefighting crew. Is if you're going to bring, potentially bring a disease to people, that's not productive. And it's something, you know, you, you got to make the decision on objective facts. And I agree, Andrew, you got to stay away from politics here, but you got to look at the greater good of the community. If you've got somebody that's not vaccinated, providing first provider service, that's a problem. Does that answer, does that answer your question, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, I want to give you some advice from, from you being a, you know, a physician in the past.
The virus is a state and I think you're in a better position, especially with the new strains that are coming in from Europe. These new strains, uh, the Moderna virus is very, um, very good against the new strains that are coming in. So you, you're going to stay one up on the game. You're going to play the game smart.
There have been some negative impacts too, but they don't play what they are.
Small, small, small percentages.
Yeah, let's just, there are negative sides to absolutely every medication and every shot and every treatment. But you can't let the negative side, if it's infinitesimal, outweigh the greater good. I hope that answers your question.
It does. It does. No, thank you.
Ru, uh, you're done? I'm sorry.
I'm done, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. How are you feeling now? Ru agents' report?
I don't have a lot to report on. We've, uh, been taking care of the roads. We haven't had that much snow or anything, but we have been taking care of them. These little one storms at a time are just enough to be a pain. And, uh, we are in really good shape to start the beginning of February, in really, really good shape right now. Yeah, I'm coming. Yeah. Um, the other thing I was going to bring up, I think you guys have a copy of it, is the, uh, comp time.
Right.
Um, have you guys read through?
Yes.
Do you know what my, did you tell them what my concerns were with the way the old comp time was and how it was worded and stuff?
Yeah.
Paul, just, just for the YouTube people.
Yeah.
Just if you could, uh, verbalize it for them, just summarize it, that's all.
Uh, yeah, I mean, summarizing, uh, I just, yesterday I had one of the employees ask if they could take a couple hours of comp time. And I actually, I told them that they, I, I didn't know. I told them honestly because it states in here that, uh, the select board has to give permission to use, uh, any comp time, um, in the current policy. Uh, so I kind of told them that I would have to call the select board, which I guess it takes two select board members if you can't.
Right.
Uh, talk outside of the meeting, so I told them it would be best if he didn't, so I didn't get in trouble. Um, so I think that's one thing in there that needs to be changed. Uh, and then, uh, the other thing that really needs to be changed is at the end of this paragraph, it says if an employee is terminated or terminates, Kane will be subject to forfeiture, which is a hundred percent illegal, uh, because you need to get paid for the hours you work.
It's earned.
It's, it's earned time that you've already worked, so you cannot even come close to even threatening to forfeit their comp time. Uh, so that really needs to be changed.
That exposes the town to a lot of litigation.
Oh, yeah. So I, I think it's important that we change that. And then the other, uh, the other issue that I had and the two employees have is, if you, if you build up to your forty hours and you use eight hours, can you build back up to that forty hour threshold? There, it's very vague. It doesn't say you can or you can't. Um, so I think we need to.
Well, I, I think there, you've identified three problems.
Yep.
With this first, and you, uh, with this first paragraph is the current policy on comp time has come in. Um, the proposed policy is memory written, um, Linda did this. And I'd like to read it and then just take a vote on making the change. I think we need to do something because we're at, um, we're at risk for litigation the way it's written now. So the way the proposed policy change that, uh, Linda addressed was compensation for overtime may be in the form of compensatory time off in lieu of a cash payment. Such payment, such compensatory time will be at one and a half hours for each hour of overtime work in excess of forty hours in any pay period. Now, this is the new change. The select board or supervisor, because the select board can't make decisions unless there's two or three of us together at the same time. And the supervisor, the department heads, whether it be the police chief, the fire chief, the road agent, they're the immediate supervisors of the people and they have to make those calls on a timely basis. They, uh, so it's either the select board, the supervisor must approve the use of any compensatory time before the time is taken. Content, compensatory time may be used to cover time lost due to illness and must be approved by the select board. Everybody comfortable with that?
I think that's fair.
Okay. Employees, uh, may accumulate up to forty hours of compensatory time per calendar year. At one and a half hours for each overtime hour work, this translates to sixty hours of time off. A time balance, a time balances will be paid on the last payroll check of the year. If the employee terminates, time recorded as a termination date will be paid. Anybody have problems with that?
First of all, what's the benefit of having comp time?
So I guess my, I just have one quick question. So the part where it says it can be used for, can you read that again one more time?
Wait a minute, I gotta find it.
Yep.
What did you say in that here?
It's, it's the third sentence down where it starts with the select board.
The select board or supervisor must approve the use of any compensatory time before the time is taken.
And then the next sentence is what he wants to hear.
Compensatory time may be used to cover time lost due to illness and must be approved by the select board.
So is that restricting it to being used just for that, I guess is what I'm asking?
That's my reading, that's my understanding.
That's, no, I mean, I was taking that as in if you had an illness that was going to set you out for two or three weeks, could you use a week's of comp time to offset that, plus maybe use your five sick days or four sick days? That's how I understood it, not like you can only use it for sick time because.
Right, but.
That wouldn't be a benefit to anybody.
And, and I agree with you. I'm just saying that as it's worded in and of itself, I think is restrictive.
Okay.
Well, it says may be used.
For?
For, to cover time lost due to illness.
For what?
It says it may be used.
May be used.
To cover time lost due to illness.
It's an option. Pretending it is an option.
Correct.
And the only thing.
But I think it should say or any, or for any other requested time off. Because it may be.
Or for other approved purposes.
Other.
For other approved purposes.
Yes.
So.
That sound better yet? Yes.
I get a two-part question here. So the benefit of the comp time, um, especially this winter, if the guys want to take two hours off or four hours off, I'm going to be honest with you, we've run out of a lot of projects at the township. We, we, and I have no problem with.
I'm going to interrupt you for a minute. I just want to make sure I get this right. Can I, what, lost due to illness or personal time?
Or any other approved purpose. Does that sound correct, Francis? Yes, I think Francis, the way you worded it was good. Or any other approved.
Yeah.
And it says and must be approved by the select board, so.
Yeah, that's the part we don't want, you know.
Yeah, it's select board or.
Department head.
Or department head.
Okay.
In other words, you, you lose the, uh, maneuver room for the department head to run the department on a timely basis if you just relegated to the select board. Cause we, we meet every two weeks.
No, I mean, in that sentence.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It just, um, the reason why I limited it to the select board is because of what Paul said. It's kind of implied, but we're trying to make it clear that this sentence is put in there for long-term things. If you have enough comp time and you need to be out, like say you need to be quarantined.
True.
For the ten days, you would use your comp time for that for all the week.
Yeah.
Whatever. Um, so is, is the way you want it written, comp time may be used to cover time lost due to illness or any other purpose approved by the select board or supervisor.
Right. That's how it should be written. Jordan, what's your thought on this?
I a hundred percent agree with everything you just said and I think.
I 100% agree with everything you just said and I think that it should go to the department head's post. I have full faith in all of them and if they approved something that we didn't like, then we would deal with the department head later, but I, I don't know how to handle it.
Yeah, same with me. The, the only other thing though, I, I don't think that addressed your last question about, cause I don't understand...
It didn't, and that was the second part of my question when I already said, hold on for a second, you're right.
I know, I, I interrupted you, but I needed to clarify that, cause I wanna make sure that's correct, okay.
No, I'm okay, I'm okay. So what I was getting to is I'm all about employees this time of year, when we're slow, okay? Using two or four hours of comp time here and there throughout the week. If they're not needed, they work the hours, let them use the time, go home, do whatever, paint your bedroom, I don't care, paint your house, I don't care. I'm just saying, I think that it should be granted to them, especially this time of year, I mean...
Yeah, when there's not much to do, there's no sense everybody sitting around looking at each other.
Right. So the second part to that is this still does not really satisfy, can you get 40 hours of comp time? Say you use eight hours, can you build back up to that threshold, the top threshold? That's what I'm, that's what I'm confused about, that's what they're confused about.
Okay. Well, let's, let's just ask you. Jordan, what's your feeling on that?
I feel like it should just, yeah, you should be able to build up to the 40. So if you use some and then earn some back, then you've got about 40.
Good.
It doesn't really make sense, in my opinion.
Okay, Linda, could you?
Um, if you build up 40 hours of...
Jordan, can you, can you hand Linda?
Yes.
If you build up 40 hours of comp time, that's equivalent to 60 hours of time off. So what is the purpose? I don't really see anybody taking 60 hours of time off. So what is the purpose of continually bringing it up to 40 hours?
Well, I would say this time of year, I would say that whoever works for the highway department wants to head into the summer with their 60 hours of time off. I don't think it should be a never-ending scale that you can go into the summer with 100 hours off.
Yeah, that would be my, as a business manager, I would wanna see that.
I mean, I would like to see them, you know as well as I know, that probably by the end of the winter, they're gonna have their 40 hours and keep them so that they can use them either. Maybe somebody's gonna go take vacation in July and maybe the other person must use that so he can go hunting in Vermont for a week. I'm just saying, I think no matter what, you're gonna see them go, come middle of March, you're gonna see them have their threshold anyway. So what I'm saying is this winter, this winter, if they wanna take a half a day off or a whole day off, if there's nothing going on, go ahead, and if they wanna build it back up, it's not only if the town is paying out more money or they're paying out less money, it's, nothing's being saved here money-wise.
They can't go over 40 hours though.
That's exactly right, but they can build up to that threshold.
He's saying, alright, I've built, I've had 40 hours of overtime, 60 hours
Time off.
Alright, I used that 40 hours and I start to build again. No, I, well, I used that 60 hours actually. No, see, it just doesn't make sense and it's kind of like an administrative, not major, but difficult to administer.
See, I, this chair, that's kind of why, I, I just looked at this today. If I could've gotten this last Thursday, then I could've passed around to, what do other, cause in my line of work, you know, I don't, these are not issues that I deal with, okay? So what I was gonna do is I don't know whether Primex could help us with something like this, or I would go to some of my other contacts, you know, at the county and, and things like that to find out, and, and I'm not sure that might be one of the questions, but again, I'm glad you brought it up, cause I, I don't know. I mean, ultimately, and this is, this is an issue that I talk about at the county level all the time, and I've talked about it here at the county level, is the money that we're spending is the taxpayers' money, okay? And right now, the taxpayers are having a hard time with it and, you know, I'm, there are a lot of people aren't happy with me with the vote that I took here a few months ago. So, I, I get, I hate to make a decision tonight on, especially that topic of it, and if we could, you know, I'm appreciative of what Linda has to say because I think she has a little bit more experience than I do in, in these types of areas, and she's always looking out for the best interest of the town as well. So, you know, I, I could see, you know, the confusion that you were outlining initially, but you've added another you know, layer to it, and so it's like to maybe do some investigation into that new layer that you've asked.
Okay.
Before I go, Ron.
I'm gonna get some input. Well, no, Wally was first.
I think Chief Ames is probably gonna touch on it.
One of the two of yous.
Yeah, Chief, go ahead.
My, my concern is this. We meet the threshold of 40 hours.
Right.
I take eight hours off. Now I've got another eight hours, in, in your way of thinking, another eight hours and I'm back to 40. Yeah, you're right in a sense that it's not costing the town anything, but it is. It's costing that person away from being working. You're costing the town labor time and you can't really do that. That's my opinion.
Is that your point?
Uh, my point was, I thought initially when we went through these polit, policies and procedures, that the policy stated that they couldn't accumulate any more than 40 hours comp time. There was a cap that was to it.
It definitely has to be a cap.
Right.
40 hours.
Right, right.
So do you keep achieving that cap? Is, is what I think you're asking.
That's what Paul wants.
Yeah.
And Linda, your point to this?
My point, I think it should remain at a cap for comp time per year. First of all, the, the comp time doesn't cost the town anymore. It's time that hourly people already worked, but they're kind of just deferring their pay. They'll take the time off later and we'll pay them what we would've paid during the week that they actually had the overtime. The only time it costs money is when a salaried employee has comp time. If that keeps, you know, Paul's already put in his 40 hours of comp time. He could take it now if he wants, you know, um...
If the salary people get comp time.
No, they don't. Well, I'm just saying that he...
This is only for hourly employees.
No, it isn't.
Well, so this is a whole, old, this is a whole different dynamic, is what Linda's going into. So I have a contract, and my contract is completely separate from the hourly employee contract, I mean, from the policy handbook.
Right.
By rules of the road agent RSA 26165, 26132, I do not have to follow any policy handbook that the town puts out. All the policies that I follow are in my contract.
What does your contract say about comp time?
You have to ask them what it...
Okay, now, I, I wanna address just one issue at a time, okay? Right now, we're, we're moving, hang on for a minute. Right now, we're moving from one issue to another.
Yeah.
Okay. For the current policy of comp time, I'm gonna make a motion that we change the present comp time policy and that we address the proposed policy as I read. So, and this will address all of the hourly employees. And, and just accept it as written. That's number one. So I'm gonna, anybody wanna second that?
I'll second that.
I vote yes?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. So what we've done for the YouTube people, we've accepted the, the comp change policies, and now we have an additional thing to address. And that would be the, the cap of 40 hours of comp time, as I understand it. And I think the, my gut feeling is it should be capped at the 40 hours. And I think that's gonna be fair for the town and fair for the employee. I think it might warrant future research into seeing how other towns handle this, and then we put this up for a vote at another time. Are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I just, can I, can I speak, I know Omar had, had mentioned something, I just want, I want the town to know, I want everybody to know that the only people, private, private contractors, private companies are not allowed to give their employees comp, uh, comp time. The only way you can earn comp time is if you work for a government entity, which the town does qualify for a government entity. So there's very few companies that you can talk to that will give comp, uh, comp time. The state does it, a lot of towns do it, and that's about it.
I, um, took the liberty of talking to a labor lawyer today, and I just wanna hear everybody's discussion.
You haven't heard me, you haven't heard me.
Your, your word. Hang on, we're just, I see your hand, I'm only on the meeting. They, they said that the comp time, as it's written now, is illegal and exposes the town to a lot of litigation. The proposed policy that was written by Linda is a sound policy and protects the town and also distributes the decision-making between the select board and the more timely decision-maker, being the department head and the supervisor. So we've accomplished that. I did not ask that person about this update to the 40 hour cap, but they, they did say it should be capped, and that's a standard operating procedure for government operations. So that's where I stand on this. Now, we gotta develop the avenue for pursuing the research on this.
I, nobody's gonna have 40 hours of comp time between now and the next meeting if anybody wants to research it. I'll, I'll certainly do the same. I mean, the way this one is going, it would surprise me if they don't get 40 hours, the rest of the whole overtime, the rest of the whole winter.
Right, and then the argument may be mute, but it gives us time to make a good decision. And, and that way everybody's not in a dispute with each other.
The employees already have a two-hour, up to two-hour vacation time in the handbook policy.
This has nothing to do with...
Oh, but it does. Now you take the comp time, let's say 50 hours, you're gonna pay them as if they paid, worked 60 hours regular time. And I'm okay with that, although I'm opposed to comp time on the face of it. They're gonna pay for 60 hours, and then they're gonna give you vacation and pay them during those vacations? That's an additional seven days of vacation time on top of the two that's in the policy. You haven't taken into consideration, let's count in the town, seven days employment because they don't get the employment. I say seven because we divide 60 by eight, okay? You've got seven and a half days.
Thank you for your thoughts.
If it's not gonna cost the town any more money, Paul?
It costs us in lost labor.
Labor's already been put in at two, three, four, five, 12, 13, 14.
They've earned, they've earned this time.
They've earned enough for that time, but now you give them more time free.
Okay. Jordan, you're up on O Business. Any updates on the gravel pit?
No, there's no updates, we're just waiting for the water to be passed. We're waiting to make a phone, uh, user survey and jump over, so we're gonna work. And in the spring, when I get out there, we can take a walk and explore our own work.
Okay. I tried to head out there and see that, but I had difficulty getting out there in the water.
I think maybe we should go in the spring sometime and leave my meat off, but after you want the water goes down, try to find a good time in there. We can talk, if we should take a walk, air pool, special meeting, if I have to take a walk.
It'd be an adventure wa, an adventure walk, that's for sure, okay?
Yeah, it's not easy out.
Okay. And are you comfortable with your warrant article?
Yes, that's, that's a number that Chris voted to do that, he's worked in Francis, already donated some time, we're gonna help. So that's the best information we have to go with, it's the best estimate we've developed.
Linda, do you wanna give a update on the warrant articles? This, we made the estimates at the last budgetary meeting.
That's number seven.
I'm sorry, I skipped it, I got you, okay, I got it.
Well, I think we do, I mean,
Yeah, that's...
Oh, yeah.
The budget
Yeah.
changed from the last one we had, so we have to...
Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so Andrew, I'd like to have you address the videography needs.
Right, right. Uh, so I had not planned on continuing the live streaming this upcoming year, cause I, uh, planning on running for select board. So I had been reaching back at Penny Baker TV to see what their capabilities are now. They're able to do YouTube live streaming, Facebook live streaming, and they're also able to simulcast to the government channel if we were looking to do all that. Their pricing...
Is that live time?
That's live, that, that would be live from here. Their pricing was pretty astronomical, to be honest. They originally quoted me at $75 an hour. I told them there's absolutely no way we were gonna do that, because they are, the quote last year was $30 an hour. So after speaking, you know, getting some advice from yourself, work, you know, just doing our YouTube live stream is good enough. They indicated they'd do that for $55 an hour. The budget item for videography would ultimately be pretty darn close to that. The overage is, it's, it's a little bit over that price. Instead of around three grand, it would be about 3,100 and, 3,100 and change if we were to do $55 an hour. They would, they would absolutely come out here, every select board meeting, they would do the, the town meeting as well, and, and take over that, that, that job basically. $55 an hour doesn't actually sound like a bad price, to be honest, to have them come in and do it, I think. And next year, their price would go up to about 60, but they would also do the simulcast across all platforms that they offer. Again, if we...
We're applying for a real one.
Uh, Andrew over at Penny Baker TV indicated YouTube, Facebook, and the simulcast of the government channel, the local government channel. So, I am not sure if you guys would want to possibly think that over or, or vote on that, but that's something that's available, and I just got that pricing within, within the last week or so.
Okay.
What's the 55 include?
$55 an hour includes the live streaming over YouTube for all of our meetings.
Is it gonna be available after meeting?
Absolutely. Every time you do live streaming to YouTube, it also makes a copy that's also on, on YouTube.
Is there any additional cost for that?
That's all YouTube and, and that's free.
YouTube's on here.
And so that came at 26 weeks at $110 a, a meeting, two hours. It's 2,860.
Did you just do the calculation for the select board meetings?
What?
You just did the, okay, so you, I'm talking also to the town meeting.
Town, this is other meetings.
And our town meetings are not exactly that short.
No.
So I, I, I basically did the same calculation you did, plus another five hours.
Yeah, cause sometimes there'll be some budget meetings that may be...
Yeah, budgetary meetings.
I, I spoke to Linda on that, as far as the, the budget hearing goes, I, I think the thought process was we were gonna try to do those the same, the same day as the, the select board meetings.
So, this is Spectrum.
Sort of what?
So Penny Baker TV will put it on their channel through Spectrum, is that what you're saying? It will also be on that? So anybody has Spectrum cable to watch it live?
Right, exactly. That, well, I mean, that would be, that, that would be the, like, the all-inclusive type package, but this, what I, $55 an hour right now is just YouTube.
Okay.
The majority of people, well, are, that watch this and they're right in to us, are watching. The majority of people, well, are, that watch this and they're right in to us, are watching on YouTube rather than Zoom.
Is there gonna be a hot button on our website that we can link directly to the, uh, list of videos for the last year? So you don't have to go through a regular process?
No, YouTube store, you can go on the internet and just dial it in and pull it up.
I know, you should be able to go directly through our website.
Francis, time out. We, you're, we gotta stay on focus here, and rather than getting into some discussion of how to find something on the internet, I'd rather stick to the town.
I'm gonna ask you how to find something on the...
That's okay.
Francis?
If there's a hot button on the, uh, website, you don't need any searching.
I, I, I would, uh, be happy to discuss some details on that on the side and, uh, you know... It, it's, it's entirely possible that, you know, any type of advice we, we can take on that, and I can take that back to them. So if you, if you want, feel free to, you know, reach out to me, you know, after the meeting or whatever, and we can, we can do stuff like that.
I brought this up back in May.
Um, so I, I don't know if you guys want to stew on that, and maybe we vote on that, uh, or the next meeting. Um, that's, that's totally up to you. Uh, that would be, that would start taking place after this upcoming town meeting.
I, I think we're pressured to make a decision tonight.
I don't, I don't wanna pressure you, I just wanna let you know that's what, that's what's out there right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that number that we're using for this in a warrant article?
It's part of our budget, because last year we had warrant articles.
To do it.
But this year, it's just a budget item. Because nothing really has changed.
And from what I understand, most towns are doing exactly what you're doing this year and making another budget item in the town's budget. So, so that's, that...
This, this, how many ways that you're talking about include travel time?
It's, it's strictly for the, the amount of hours that they're streaming, uh, that they're actually running here, so...
They don't charge half hours, it's either one hour or two hours, I'm guessing.
Yeah, so that's what...
Can we actually meet the Penny Baker TV? Isn't there a way that we could do, I know a lot of people aren't using Zoom, but Zoom is one option that's basically free. And then could we even buy a camera? Is it expensive or difficult to do the YouTube live ourselves and buy a camera instead of paying someone seventy-five bucks an hour?
Andrew?
I want you to...
I, 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 so...
All right, let me finish.
Sorry, I didn't...
Okay, Andrew, you wanna respond to that?
So I'm using my, all my own equipment right now. Uh, if there's somebody else out there that has the capability of doing that, then by all means, you know, that's, that's perfectly fine. I have no idea if there is anyone else in town, uh, to be honest. So, I mean, that would probably be a much cheaper option, and, you know, would help to, you know, have somebody else be more engaged in the select board meetings as well, that's part of town. I would have zero problem with that. I'm, I'm just indicating because I'm, you know, going for a, a, you know, elected position, I am not going to be doing that this upcoming year. Um, and I'm trying to look for an alternative, and this is the only alternative that I know about, that's, that might be out there.
Okay, thank you, Omar.
Makes no difference to me. I think it's, I think whatever we can do to get good disclosure of what we're doing, so the public knows what we're doing, and, I mean, you're talking to a guy who doesn't do a lot of this stuff, so, uh, although I've been doing a lot of Zoom meetings, and sometimes five Zoom meetings in a day, which is not any fun, at least I don't have to drive back and forth, so... Uh, and, uh, so, other than my attending Zoom meetings of this meeting, which have worked out all right when my computer works, uh, but I, I just think it's important to, under some platform, is that the word they use?
Yes.
To get this information available to the people, and if they, it can be, what do they call it when you, they can call right in, they can see what's going on and call in.
Live time?
Uh, they, uh, yeah, live video conference.
Yeah, I think it's important that we stay live. I think that's one of the parameters, and that's why, uh, YouTube seems to work out well.
I do know that PPTV is very good, okay? I mean, they, they, uh, they put me on every two weeks, uh, for my county commissioner report, every two weeks for a half hour. And it's still on there for, for the last two years that, you know, I was the commissioner, so you can still go on there and see just Omar.
Is it worth, um, advertising within the town to see if there's anybody interested in doing the videography? And that would, that would fall in line with what Jordan's recommending. Jordan, what do you think on that?
Yeah, I just, I've never met anyone ever that watches Penny Baker TV. I think having Zoom and YouTube Live, which are cheap, easy options. I don't, I don't know the technical aspect of what Andrew has for equipment, but even if we could buy the equipment and it lasts three years, I mean, wouldn't he need a camera and microphone and then a, and a link? Um, that's a lot cheaper, and we might be able to just do it ourselves as part of the meeting without having to hire someone.
Andrew, okay, I'm gonna let, Jordan, I'm gonna let Andrew respond to this. And, uh, Andrew, we are not picking on your talents or your...
No, 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 that's... That, that's fine, uh, the, the way that I do it isn't necessarily, like, the way it has to be done. Uh, there's quite a few thousand dollars worth of equipment right here, so, um, and just, you know, just this right here. I have the laptop that I'm using to pipe that video and audio out to the internet, um, out to YouTube, and, uh, the camera itself is definitely way overkill for this. Uh, so that, that's a few thousand dollars worth of, you know, of a camera.
Well, what, you're gonna say something?
Yeah, a few years ago, there was a gentleman in, I don't know whether he was from Wentworth or Warren, he was going around videotaping meetings. I can't remember his name, I, I don't know if he's still in the...
Kenyon Cow.
Yes, so, and, and I don't know where it went, all I know is that I was going to a number of those meetings, and he was at most all of those meetings, and he had a camera, and I don't know what he was doing with it, but, and, and as Jordan brings out a good point, it didn't really dawn on me that PPTV is basically for the Plymouth area, and we're outside that area, so I'm not... So if people aren't watching PPTV from Wentworth, I'm not surprised.
So, uh, that gentleman that you, uh, sorry, the gentleman you mentioned, he worked for Penny Baker TV?
No, we didn't, we didn't provide the stuff.
Well, that's, that's what, um, that's what Penny Baker TV told me.
He, he provided the information, and they told him...
I, I think there's some confusion. What Andrew is proposing here with Penny Baker TV is to only take, I mean, is to only broadcast it on YouTube.
Live.
We would no longer do Zoom or Penny Baker TV government channel. They would provide the service to just do YouTube like Andrew's doing there.
Right, right, at fifty-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
Good clarification, thank you.
Sorry, I was too...
Good, that's, okay.
Okay, so, so I'll, I'll, you know, what I'll do is I, I can work with Linda, I'll come up with something, maybe we can do some type of ad, throw it out there.
Yeah.
You know, um...
It may, it may come to absolutely zero fruition, but at least, you know, Jordan, at least it's approaching to solve the issue the way Jordan was thinking about it.
Right, okay.
So Kenyon Cow was coming to the meeting with a simple camera, still with the meeting, and after the meeting, he'd take it to Penny Baker, and they would somehow get it online.
Right.
You know, that doesn't, see, what we need here for disclosure to the community is they need to see things as we address it, so they can, they can, so it's live and they take part. It's, it's passive, um, government if you just put it on at a separate date, so our goal is to keep it live time.
He never, he never did it live. Um, and Penny Baker TV did not have the capability of going live up until, honestly, I brought it up to them. I told them exactly what I was doing, and they started looking into it, so now they have the capability of doing it.
I'm sure for a couple hundred bucks a month, half the people love us to see it on YouTube.
Yeah, this, this is a good idea.
So, so I have a lot, so I have a lot more to talk about, and it's not, it's not only, uh, the TV or the Penny Baker TV topic. Do you guys mind if I move on to the broadband?
Now we'll address the broadband issue.
So I, I wanna take a little bit of time to tell everybody about the fact that the, the co-op, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, uh, is moving along with, uh, their efforts to blanket their, their membership with fiber, um, fiber, uh, fiber optic, uh, internet, high-speed broadband. But as of right now, and, and I, I appreciate Omar that, that you had, uh, you know, forwarded me some communications from the co-op. Take, ultimately, what, what's going on right now is they're going through a process of RFIs and RFPs with contractors and so on, uh, to determine how long it would take to build out to their, their membership. The, the co-op had basically applied, um, for, for, uh, this grant program that the FCC is doing called, uh, it's called the ARDOF, and I'll kind of, uh, read that. Actually, I wanna just read a little, little paragraph of what had been sent off to the county commissioners that had been forwarded to me. NHGC has made two broadband commitments that affect, uh, Grafton County. First in resolution, uh, first in a resolution on October twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty, the Board of Directors signaled its intent to provide high-speed fiber internet to all its underserved members in a hundred and seventeen New Hampshire municipalities. That is very, very relevant to Grafton County because NHGC members are located in thirty-six of thirty-eight Grafton County municipalities. Second, NHGC bid and won broadband funding for seventy-one census block groups in the recent, uh, FCC Rural Digital Opportunity Fund, ARDOF, auction for broadband grants. The highest number of those census groups are in Grafton County, and FCC rules require NHGC to provide service to all underserved addresses. Uh, those, the FCC has identified as having less than twenty-five megabits per second down and three up. That's your, basically, your broadband speeds in those areas. The result of those two NHGC commitments is that NHGC will be building a fiber broadband backbone in Grafton County and providing fiber internet service to thirty-six Grafton County towns. So I know some of that information, uh, might be a little bit technical, and I apologize, but what ultimately they're doing, they don't need to get anybody, any town's permission. Uh, they are ultimately going to be building out, uh, fiber network to, again, the underserved areas. Now, there's only part of our town that is underserved. So in that census block that they have in town...
Well, not the town is underserved.
So, uh, i- as far as it's basically any part that is, isn't served by Spectrum. Um, I don't know how many people that is, uh, 'cause...
I didn't know if there was a geographic issue or...
It's more so closer to the, the core of the town.
Okay.
Ultimately, uh, the amount of people I don't know, because actually Charter never responded to the RFI that I sent them, the request for information I sent them, they never responded. Uh, so they haven't been considered in the, the project I've been working on. So ultimately, the, the census block that they won right now is the southwest portion of town. And I believe that the greater population of town is in the other part.
In the north, yeah.
Yeah, uh, so this completely leaves out any, like, the core of town. It's, it's further, it's, I, I think it may cover Ellsworth Hill and west of twenty-five, uh...
Eight.
Twenty, twenty-five, sorry. So west of twenty-five and sort of south of Ellsworth Hill. So, uh, why I'm bringing this information up, they, they are going to be, uh, building out fiber in the area eventually. We have no idea when that'll be. Uh, they can't tell me right now. Uh, they can't tell me which areas exactly they're going to build. Um, I just know what they, they've told me from a very high level. So that being said, I still want to go ahead with the project I've been working on. Um, I was planning on putting that off until I, I got more information from NHGC. But I don't think it would be in the best interest of the town if I did that. We still have to vote at the town meeting if we were gonna go ahead with the bond.
So just, so I understand it, and I'm speaking for the YouTube people, that, um, the NHGC only applies to southern and western sections of the town?
Well, just like right now, it, it does, that's the grant that they won.
Right, that's the grant that they won, okay. And then the second thing is, is there's no identified timeline for them to execute on their plan.
Right, so it's, it's entirely possible that, you know, they, that grant, uh, that census block that they won, that they'll use that grant money to build out to the underserved area, underserved areas in that census block. But they have no obligation to do any other part of town at the moment. Uh, so who knows what's ultimately gonna happen? We don't know, we don't know when it's gonna happen either.
Omar?
Go ahead.
So I'm gonna add another element to this.
Sure, thank you.
The county has already set up a broadband, broadband committee. There are, I don't know, seven or eight town administrators. I don't know, Linda, if they invited you to participate in that, but the town of Warren is involved in it. To have all of Grafton County, to have Grafton County be, I forget the terminology that you...
It's a Communications District, the HB eleven eleven.
But anyway, so all I know is they've, this committee has been meeting. Uh, before I became a commissioner, they, they appeared at one of the commissioner meetings via Zoom. Uh, and so they're, they're working on something like this as well. Now, they're go, now they're in the process of preparing, uh, legislation. Now, I don't know whether it's already in, or whether they're gonna try to piggyback it onto an existing piece of legislation, but today, the, uh, business administrator, the county administrator, said that they're gonna come to one of our next two meetings, this committee, to, to, not this committee, but the county commissioners, to update them on, uh, what, where they are at that point. And so, you know, Bristol is very much, uh, involved in this thing, so... And, you know, I got a copy of your bond letter, and, but I'm not ready to respond to that, okay?
That's okay.
And so I, you know, this is one of those things that should have, the bond letter should have been presented, you know, under your protocol last Thursday, so that it could have gotten to us instead of, you know, getting to me two hours before tonight's meeting, and... So there's, there's, there's another component, you know, there's another group out there trying to improve broadband coming into Grafton County.
I thi, I think that the, I think the goal of the town is to improve internet communication. And right now, it looks like the county's approaching it, the NHGC's approaching it, uh, there's government grants, and we're sort of in, in the place where we're making a decision when you get a nebulous environment out there. The timeline from NHGC is not conducive to the town of Wentworth, it sounds like. And it's only gonna fulfill part of our needs.
Possibly, and, and I'm not saying, you know, in the end, they could, um, there's another option, there's a quote-unquote "option" for the other census block, um, that covers the rest of the town later this year, that's what, that's what I was told.
Yeah, I think we gotta do the whole town or nothing, yeah.
I, understood, so, so my, my dilemma right now is do I continue on with my project, or do we wait on one of these other options? Because if I continue on and we vote in March to, you know, vote for this, this, uh, you know, uh, term issue bond, then, uh, Consolidated will start this project this year, they will start building out the infrastructure this year. Um, and it, it could be as early as the end of the year, and they build up the entire town. I, it's, it's all based off of, you know, do we think we, we need this now? Or should we wait for the, the county, the Grafton County, uh, broadband committee? Or to see what NHGC's gonna do? Because we're looking at, you know, the town issuing a one-point-five-million-dollar bond to do the Consolidated project.
What's the purpose of the bond?
The bond will be to pay for half of, uh, of the build-out of the broadband infrastructure.
And why should the town as a whole be paying for somebody else? And why should the town as a whole be paying for somebody else's livelihood?
This is this is how it works via SB one seventy.
It's the bond, the bond is the state's.
I don't want to pay for this. Somebody wants the the high speed internet. Pay for it, do their service.
Well, it is paid for out of this service.
So we don't need a bond of the town?
The the bond would pay back, would be paid back, which would be about a fifteen-dollar fee per month for whoever subscribes. Nobody would be paying back the bond except the people that are subscribed.
Right, it's a user.
So if you don't want, if you don't want consolidated internet service, you would not be paying anything back to the bond.
With taxes, I would if you have a bond.
The taxes absolutely would not be affected. This is not, there's no taxes that would be increased because of it.
You never heard of one that didn't raise any money?
There there's no taxes that would be increased for this.
How are you going to have a bond with no money coming out of it?
Jordan?
I have a question. My situation is different, but I'm not sure it's unique in the town. I have consolidated internet now where I am. But the problem is, is that there are co-op poles. And even though I pay for most of these poles, I have to pay pole rent to the co-op because Consolidated doesn't own the poles. And I feel like there's going to be a lot of other people infringing this, which is the fear of this, that have, you know, everybody has co-op poles, but Consolidated doesn't have their own poles everywhere. So how does that, how does that affect it? I mean, are they going to work with the co-op or are you going to be, you know, you're going to buy, pay the bond and do all this and consolidate? Then everybody has to pay pole rent for co-op money. Because that's happening to me right now. I have to rent thirty dollars per pole for every pole that's co-op bonded, not consolidated, which is not.
And Jordan, that's a really, really good point and I and I can tell you the answer. No, it, the town's focus not going to pay anything extra except for what the bond is. Now, Consolidated absolutely has to pay co-op to rent space on the pole. Co-op obviously is not doing that, they own the poles. So yeah, so it's entirely possible that what the co-op is going to charge could be, could possibly be cheaper than what Consolidated charges. But I would, absolutely Consolidated has to pay rent on those poles. But that's, obviously they have to pay for it somehow, so that that could be all included in the infrastructure cost. But there won't be anything additional that the subscribers will be paying on top of paying back that bond.
And you said the end.
So I wouldn't have to pay co-op, I wouldn't have to pay co-op pole rent even though it's in Consolidated.
Yes, you would.
You would.
Yes, you would.
Yes, you would.
I would, so it sounds like that if the co-op, because I can't think the only one this is happening. And I mean, the whole town's got a co-op, so it seems to me that if there was a chance the co-op was going to do this, that that would be by far the most efficient option if they were going to do it, if they don't have it.
Right. Jeff?
I guess there's a lot of questions amongst people here, but probably people, you know, out in the town. My biggest concern is we keep talking about a bond. And I don't want to put fire in Francis's feet here, but he has some points about a bond bonding the town. The town absolutely has to back that bond.
I I honestly, I'm no expert on bonds, but I can tell you right now that there, I, one of my points of tonight was to set up two public informational hearings. We have to set up a bond hearing and we have to set up an additional budget hearing to take care of all this.
So I just, by saying all that and listening to what you, and you've done a great job here, but I feel that you really put big effort towards this. Would it not hurt to put this on the back burner?
Absolutely not. It's it's all, it's a matter of honestly, it's simply put, time. Are we willing to wait some additional time to wait on what NHGC comes back with? What Grafton County comes back with? If we do, then we probably, most likely wouldn't be waiting, we'd wait at least until next year before anything even starts to be built out.
Yeah, the way I'm seeing this right now, there's too many variables to make an intelligent decision.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be.
I I got a question for Andrew. What what, I've heard a lot lately about Starlink and Moonbeam, that it's satellite internet that we're going to have within six to eight months, maybe around here, because we're in the right latitude.
Elon Musk.
I've just done it, and that's what I've been hearing. I've been reading a lot about Moonbeam and Starlink.
I don't know anything about Moonbeam, but I'm just going to guess it's probably Amazon. I can tell you what Starlink is, though. Starlink, so they announced recently that they're going to be opening their, like their beta program down to the forty-first parallel, which is actually in Connecticut, so that would cover the entire state. That's a five-hundred-dollar initial fee that each customer ought to pay and they're limited to about, maybe about, I think about a hundred and fifty megabits per second down and slower speeds off. So that's that's going to be probably more than enough for most people in town, I can tell you. I, there is no definites on when that possibly could happen and I can't put that as part of my project right now because there's way too many variables.
I know, I was just curious because I've been hearing and reading a lot of it.
So it it it's coming. They, I can tell you right now SpaceX is planning on, I think there's a few hundred satellites I figure have deployed. It could be, it could be, yeah, somewhere under a thousand, I think, satellites have been deployed. And they're planning on having the entire planet blanketed with multiple layers of satellites in low orbit that can rival fiber optic internet, actually. But when exactly that's going to be offered everywhere, I don't know. That's still, I don't have any, I don't have any specific details on.
Andrew, I think you're doing a great job with a very complex situation and you're addressing a need, the needs of this town. The job of the select board is to make the best decision for the town. There's too many variables right now. And it's good that there's a lot of variables because out of this will come the best pathway. I think we've got to keep searching this out and finding the best pathway. But I I think any votes or moving towards committing to a bond right now is is premature.
Okay, so I guess I would ask from you folks is, would you like me to put this project on hold until we have, we we get much more information from NHGC? And and obviously the Grafton County commit, committee as well?
You want to attend that meeting?
Absolutely, I'd love to. I I wish Grafton County, the the broadband committee would include me in all their meetings, to be honest.
Okay, what I'd like to do is I want to pull Jordan and Omar, just get your thoughts on this because I just set my personal.
What's your question, Mr. Chairman? Whether we proceed or not? Put it on hold?
Yeah, I think there's too many variables. I think Andrew's doing a great job. Andrew has to stay, you have to stay in the game.
Yes.
Okay, and I think you need the backing of the town to stay in the game. Whether, and and we need to get you on the committees and each one of these things. And whether it makes phone calls from the select board or whatever, I think we need to do those sort of things. Because I don't think, I mean, I'm not, I can't go to those meetings and know what the hell I'm talking about. You can. So as far as a bond decision, I think that's premature right now. I I don't have, and I'm speaking for myself, I don't have the dog's face on the bond. Jordan, what are your thoughts on this? I'm just trying to get.
I agree. I I I agree. Andrew has done a lot of work and doing a really good job. Even though we don't proceed right now, it's not a waste of time. It's something you look at and you can't, you can't make these decisions without trying, looking into it. And you have a lot to think about. But it sounds to me like it's also premature. I don't think that we should sign up for a bond with all the variables going on. We can't make the best decision possible with all the things that are around here.
Yeah, I think going, going to a bond may put us in a pathway where we can't make a maneuver decision for something that comes along as better.
Yep.
With with two additional comments, I agree with with you, Arnie, and with you, Jordan. The the other two comments are, I will let you know, Andrew, when this committee is coming to and talk to the Grafton County Commissioners. And I will also ask if they will include you on the committee, if as the Wentworth Town representative on on this issue.
Absolutely, and I and I honestly, I tried to ask for them to put me on the committee before and and they wouldn't. They said, oh, you can you can attend the meetings, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't allow me to be on the committee.
All I can do is ask.
Yep, okay.
Do we need to vote? Set, go, Jordan?
Can I make a motion to make Andrew our representative to the county commissioner of one, of town one?
Yeah, I would second that.
Yep, and I I call the question, I vote yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
One of the reasons they're telling you the southwest part of Wentworth is underserved. Nobody lives here.
I know, I know, that's that's why, that's why I was, it it really, it really didn't make a whole lot of sense to me to put a lot of, you know, confidence in that at the moment.
Roadchester Road and Rose River and.
So 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 what I'll do is, Linda, everything else that I basically was talking about, I'll just, we'll just put that on hold. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask for any additional meetings at this time or have you guys even sign off on basically requesting bond counsel. We'll just, we'll wait and I will make sure I keep in touch with the executives over at NHGC and obviously be involved with the.
If you have problems, when you get shunned aside by any of these companies or group, you need to come to us.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Okay.
And then, and that's, that's our job. That's our job as the town to come and reinforce your your actions.
Absolutely. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Now, are you going to take care of contacting, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if I may? Are you going to take care of contacting the legal counsel with Divine Millimet from Concord?
Yeah, I'll I'll let them know that we're going to put the project on hold for now. They've done very little for me and since we didn't technically.
Employ.
Employ them, I suppose. I don't think there's any any issue there at all.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure. I felt that was a loose end that we could be tied up.
Understood, not a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
I'd like to open it up for anybody on the YouTube end of things for public comments on the meeting so far.
Arnie, I have some new questions at the end. I have something to ask about at the end.
Why don't you ask about it now while we just.
I just have a suggestion called a warrant article, a new one, to discuss. In the spring, the road agent's contract's been on the news. He's been on a one-year contract. And I think that that's a little bit unfair. Most people don't work year to year and wait until the end of their contract to find out if they're going to be employed. I think that a warrant article that allows the select board to enter into up to a three-year contract would be good. So it doesn't have to be three. If you get a new person, you can do a one-year contract. But once you have someone established just to give them some confidence in their job, I think that a warrant article that allows us to enter up to three years would be, would be good. And I think that that contract also should be reviewed long before it is, it comes up. Last year, we had very short notice. And I think that from our earlier conversations, a lot of it, the new one, should be built around the current inlook, you know, policy inlook. So it's just all, all the same across the board, you know, generally speaking.
Okay.
Well, there's going to be a new select man or person, excuse me. I don't know if there's any women running, but there may, there's going to be a new select person at the time you need to sign that new contract, I believe. So I won't be here and I don't know how how much you want me to take part in that in that discussion because I'm not going to be here. I don't, you know, as long as I'm selectmen, I don't mind being involved in the in the discussion. But I never got a copy of the existing contract that you have with the town.
You refused to sign it.
I refused to sign it. That's all. I just refused to sign it, sir.
You handed the contract back because all three of you had a contract.
Well.
Paul, am I correct? Are we not allowed to enter into more than one year at a time with you? Is that why it's a one-year?
So it is an RSA. And if it was a warrant article, to make the road agent position a two- or three-year position. If it's voted on town meeting and it passes, it doesn't go into effect until the following town meeting, the selectman appoint a road agent for a three-year position at that time. You may want to contact your lawyer and ask them if that is right or wrong. But my belief, because I hold this one through this a few years ago, is that when you change anybody's position from one year to a three-year, it's got to go through the town meeting and it also does not take effect until the following year at town meeting.
Okay, okay, Jordan.
Not necessarily need three. If you have a new road agent, you want to try it out for a year. But if you have someone established, you want to keep, you know, up to three years, just have that plus going.
Okay, Jordan, since this is your your idea, why don't you draft up a warrant and and get it into Linda and we'll put it up for a town vote, okay?
Do you want to check with your needs of the municipal? Is that something that we should be doing about that new warning?
We can do that.
You're talking about something.
Okay, Jordan, we can do that. Do you, do you mind giving them a call or do you want me to? Okay, so the action items on this, Jordan? Before we do, before you do the warrant article, we should be in touch with the New Hampshire Municipal Association just to get guidance on this. Paul's doing a good job. I think he needs positive reinforcement. And if it means writing a warrant, we'll just write the warrant and we'll get guidance on the writing of the warrant from the New Hampshire Municipal Association. Linda?
I think there's two different kinds of road agents. I think there are one that is like elected or appointed. That would require a warrant article to determine his salary and how long the contract. Paul, as far as my understanding, is a town employee. You can sign any kind of contract, okay? If you want to renew his contract, sign it for three years, you don't need a warrant article. And.
Jordan, can you hear that?
Yes, I can. That was the case that would require a, unless it's under the property, we could only do a one-year contract.
I don't think so. What, you know, Francis probably has something to say about this because there is, there's a difference. There's an official, I don't know if it's elected or appointed road agent and then there's a hired employee as a road agent.
The town is only authorized to spend for one year unless there is a contract agreed upon by the town to pay for, like the teachers, the teachers have three-year contracts. There's a salary schedule that the town has to agree on every three years in the process of negotiation. And unless you have that authority given to you at annual meeting, you have no authority to spend outside of the one-year period of time.
You're a hundred percent right, Francis.
I know that, in that case.
You are.
Can I do?
You're not giving authority to spend, you're just making a contract between an employer and employee. Whatever the contract says, like this year says salary is fifty thousand and say in a year two, the salary be fifty-five, you just adjust the budget for that. Am I not right?
No.
It's.
If everybody has.
It sounds like to to make this, Jordan, it's your topic, hang on. So to address this, I think we got to put some more thought into it. I'm looking at this as we go to identify your exact position, number one. Once we, and we do know that, and number two. And number two, to discuss with, this with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, to find out what, what we can do properly, and then to follow their guidance. Are you comfortable with that, Jordan?
Yeah, I think this, we just need the clarity. I just would like to be able to give him a warrant of one year at a time. And I think, and I just wanted to make up that this year, we should, you should revisit this well before our expires, so we can review the contract program.
Right. Okay.
So who's gonna be the contact person for figuring this out? Do you want me to do it?
Hang on.
Or is it the municipal, I don't know?
Jordan, hang on for a minute. I'm just getting this action item together. Linda, can you?
I'll make the call.
Yeah. Linda's gonna make the call to the New Hampshire Municipal Association. And she will get back to all, all the three of us, and that will help guide us. Okay?
That sounds great. I just want, yeah, I just think if I'm there, it's a year.
We've gotta keep it as simple as possible and stay within the rules. Okay.
Even after you have the contract established, you still have rules and regulations for the process.
That's what she's gonna, we're gonna take care of that, Francis. Okay. Any more comments from the select board?
You have nothing on my.
Okay. So that closes option number six. Now, at this point, I'd like to enter the budget hearing, into a budget hearing to discuss the changes from January 12th of 2021. And a reminder to the public that the deadline to petition the select board to include any article in a warrant is February 2nd of 2021. That's coming up pretty quick. Okay? The motion now of the meeting is moved into the budgetary hearing.
Second?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. Okay, Linda, would you like to address this?
Um, yes. Last, at the last meeting, the budget hearing, we are, all the department heads came up with preliminary budget of a million three ninety seven oh four. Since that time, since January 12th till today, a few adjustments were made, because a lot, you know, some of these things were estimates. The highway truck estimate was twenty-six thousand five hundred. Paul actually got an agreement, or you know, better figures from.
Exact figure.
Exact figures from a Western Star, that there is an increase of sixteen hundred and forty-one. So that budget item is up to twenty-eight one forty-one. The ambulance, I had estimated at forty-four thousand. They happened to have their annual meeting the same day as our budget hearing. And they came up with a new figure of forty-five eight fifty. So that increases the budget by eighteen hundred and fifty dollars more. The library budget was estimated at forty-four two sixty-nine before their trustee meeting. After they met, they increased the budget to forty-six one ninety, increasing their budget by nineteen hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is still lower than their 2020 budget, just so that you know. I have all the backup too. Then the next increase was, originally I thought the gravel pit, to do the topography study, or there's the surveys or whatever, was gonna be seven thousand. HTP engineers said that it would be closer to eight, so I added another thousand there. And we've had some recent interest in the conservation committee, possibly. We had taken that out of the budget for lack of interest. So we put two thousand back in there just to cover some potential expenses. So we started last, two weeks ago with a million three ninety seven oh four. We've added in eight thousand four hundred and twelve dollars. So our new budget, and I really can't see much else happening with it, is one million three ninety-nine one sixteen. If anybody wants the backup for, you know, the letter written by the ambulance, the ambulance, company said the increase in their budget, which was five thousand dollars for this whole year, was their increase. No, it was, yeah, five thousand dollars. They said it's because more people are getting sick, you know, we have a higher LDP population, just costs have gone up all over the place, especially for payroll costs, and unreimbursed costs from Medicare and Medicaid. So, you know, just overall, the costs have gone up. And they have to, you know, pass it on to the, I think it's three towns involved in the Warren Wentworth. Is it Warren Wentworth and Paramore?
Oh, Dorchester? Is it Dorchester?
I, I don't know, but we're all, you know.
Paramore, possibly.
Paramore.
Jeff.
I believe Paramore.
Yeah, so we're all taking a part of that. It averages out to approximately forty-eight dollars per capita, per town. It's a, it's a, an increase every year. It goes up, you know, anywhere between three and five thousand dollars, or three and four thousand, so.
Jeff, what's your sense? Are they efficient in how they run their operations?
I think they, they are certainly trying to be. I know that in the past, there were some issues.
That's a big difference between are they efficient?
I think that they have a ways to go, but I think they're really trying hard to get on the plate.
Your alternative is unimaginable.
It is. If you look at hiring, say, Plymouth Ambulance to come in here to do the same thing.
Hang on.
Yeah, it's like what?
So just because, so just because they have the high ground, they can dictate to the towns? Is that what you're saying?
No, because we've looked at this.
That's gonna set up an adversarial relationship.
Yeah, we've looked at this before. You know, what, what's it gonna cost for Plymouth to do our services, or a private ambulance service? And because these guys are already in place, they can keep those costs probably lower. The big problem they ran into, of course, was with the IRS. So, the IRS. So they've been trying to pay that back for a number of years.
Yeah, one of my personal frustrations with this ambulance service is they're not accountable. And number one, and number two, they don't even step up to the plate. They didn't even come to the budgetary meetings. So, you know, that's not gonna.
You have two representatives.
That's not gonna come out in good graces.
Yeah. Do we know who our representatives are from this?
I don't right now, I must say, but.
George Morrell was one of, and.
He's the one that gave the report last year. Okay.
And, and I, I think at one point Cory Cormier, maybe?
Oh, yes.
Was the other.
Yeah, I just don't think there's any representation from Wentworth in this ambulance group.
I thought within the last, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I think in the last couple of months, I thought George was still involved, George Morrell, so.
And I don't know. Nobody shows up.
Right.
That's not right.
So I, I would.
I know you're taking the brunt of it, right?
Yeah, no, that's fine. I would suggest that maybe the select board or Linda, write our people a letter, or invite them in to say, okay, what, what's going on?
All they have to do is come and explain it.
Right.
Everybody else, I mean, all, everybody in this town came to that budgetary meeting prepared. They presented their stuff, the questions were asked, it was done properly. Only two groups came in, you know, with excuses.
Yeah.
From my experience.
And the ambulance people are, that's all I'm seeing, is inefficiency and excuses. And they gotta clean up their damn act if they want more money from us.
From my experience, Charlie, with the warrant form, medical, they have dug themselves out a hole that you would have had time imagining.
Well, I don't care about where they were. I want to know where they're going.
But you know when you're behind.
And where they're going, they gotta prove it. They gotta step up to the plate.
But you know when you get behind, you have the hard time catching that up.
Right. Well, that's their job.
So the other, the other side of that, Arnie, is they are overseen by these other people, that committee. That's the group.
Overseen by who?
By the.
Representatives.
Representatives. And that was a must from the State Attorney General's office.
So our rep in this town doesn't even come to the meetings?
That I don't know.
Who's the rep, Linda?
I, I don't know.
There's two in the town.
Yeah. It, it was last year, George Morrell and Cory Cormier. I don't know if they still are.
Can we find out who they are and address this? Are you open for attention?
Is that the buzzer?
Is this, is this a bell? Go to your corners?
Yeah, go to your corners, you're ready. So that, that would be the route to take, is get with your representatives.
I'm just, yeah, okay, okay. Jeff, I appreciate that insight. Jordan, Homer, hey, I just want to get them to clean their act up.
Sure. And, and part, you know, part of what they do is they also send out a request for a donation if anybody uses their services. And, you know, they save, they, they save a lot of lives. Mr. Chairman, Warren Wentworth, the ambulance service saves a lot of lives.
That's a job.
I, I know, but, and they, and they do that, but, you know, it's, it's this.
It's just, you, you're paying for the service and getting an efficient service. That's all I'm saying.
They have a hell of a lot left.
Yeah, but you're right. It would be nice if, if they, their representatives.
They gotta participate. That's, that's the key to running a town.
And I think they're doing a wonderful job. I think the problem may be the breakdown in communication as far as who may, who they think may be representing them here from the town.
Well.
And they're not, and they're not aware that that's not being done.
Okay, then we'll just find out who the representative is, and if they're not doing the job, we need to get a different representative?
They probably should have given a report to you on behalf of the town.
Sorry, wait a minute. I missed, I'm getting three conversations.
I'm sure that one of their representatives would be here if they knew that nobody else was here representing them. From, from the Warren Wentworth ambulance service themselves.
Okay. How many representatives do they have now? Do you know? They used to have two from Warren, three from Wentworth.
I have just one kind of question about the budget. I just don't want to be.
That's okay.
My question is, compared to last year's budget, where is this year's budget? Higher, lower, same, you know, how much is different? Can you think a little bit more?
I need different colored papers. Our budget last year was one million four forty-two. It's one three nine nine. But, I, I mean, that's total appropriations. If you look at it a different way, you know, we took some money out of.
Colin, do this in front of you. The ambulance spent five thousand dollars.
Right.
How much?
Five, uh, five eight fifty.
Oh, I thought you said fifty.
No, it went up.
I don't have any problems with the dollar. I just wanted to make sure that they've got their act together.
My experience says good.
So Linda, do you?
I, I think the way we look at it is what our actual expenses were this year, compared to what we've got a budget for 2021. Our actual expenses, and this is taking out all the capital reserves and stuff like that, because, you know, that's money that was already spent in prior years. In 2020, total taxable expense, you know, appropriations that comes from tax, a million two oh six. And this year, it's a million two seventeen. So we're up by eleven thousand dollars in our budget.
And just one follow-up question, Mr. Chairman. But that does not include warrant articles. Any warrant articles that the town passes will add to this?
Well, it's all warrant articles, but, correct. This is the amount that is coming from taxation. And it's at the, I don't know how to explain it to you. All right, our total appropriations are a million three ninety-nine.
Yep.
And from that, coming from capital reserves is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And from fund balance.
That may not all be taxes.
Well, no, but by taxes and other revenues. That I, I gave a sheet last week about where our, what our other revenues are. And I have this rent, you know, this whole packet that you can look at. I updated it from last week. And you can see exactly.
Linda, I got a question for you right now. The, the action items on this, we respect the ambulance. And, oh, it was one with Jordan.
Yeah, the ambulance called the municipal about a warrant article for road agent.
The road agent. I just want to make sure that we distribute things evenly for everybody, rather than just kind of what I do.
I think that's all.
Are you comfortable with that?
Well, yeah.
Okay, if you're not, if you can have Jordan help you with, I know, I'm just.
Phone calls, I can.
I know. I'm just trying to make sure we're all in the same way.
Yeah.
Okay, so now we've gone from the estimates into the final review. Are there any questions on the final review?
I'd still like to see the truck. Nine thousand dollars in hand and not given and free.
I don't know how we're gonna do that.
Yeah, we've already discussed.
You go ahead. Nine thousand isn't even mentioned on the contract.
Okay.
Is that the newest contract that they signed?
I'd like to move to come out of the budgetary hearing. Any second?
So by second?
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes.
Okay. Any other comments from anybody? I move to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-five.
Still move?
Okay. I vote yes.
Six forty-five.
I was like, you've been here too long.
I know. No, no, that's my fault.
Two seconds with that.
Homer, I guess.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Okay.